Counsel, the order, please call the roll.
Isom.
Yes.
I'm Kier.
Kier.
Laura.
Sure.
Zingy.
Here.
Kiper. Gage. Seibertson.
All right, please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. That brings us down to persons to be heard. Reed Harding, let's start us off.
My name is Reed Harding, and I'm the Drug-Free Communities Coordinator with the Catch-A-Can Wellness Coalition Substance Abuse Task Force and the Catch-A-Can Youth Support Network. I want to thank the City Council for accepting our community's input into the matter of the memorandum asking Marijuana Control Board to approve onsite consumption. I'm a certified TAPS cardholder, and I have years of experience working as a professional bartender. I know the difficulties of dealing with intoxicated individuals. When you run an establishment like a bar, you're responsible for getting people intoxicated. We are responsible as a community for letting tourists, some of them who have never smoked marijuana before, to get high. They need to be supervised and monitored properly, and that's ultimately our duty by choosing to allow them to get high. While there are some similarities between alcohol and marijuana bar, there are also major differences. Simply put, when you're drinking in a bar, your drinks don't get other people intoxicated. Imagine a bar where everybody's drink is getting everybody else intoxicated. This snowball effect will lead to people getting more intoxicated than they intend to, and it's a serious concern, I think. People will claim ventilation offers a solution, but after a review of available evidence, the Surgeon General said with authority, "Only by eliminating smoking in indoor spaces can we fully protect non-smokers from exposure to secondhand smoke." Separating smokers from non-smokers, cleaning the air, and ventilating the buildings cannot eliminate exposures of non-smokers to secondhand smoke. Furthermore, the American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, and Air Conditioning Engineers concluded that no other engineering approaches, including current and advanced dilution, ventilation, or air cleaning technologies, have been demonstrated or should be relied upon to control health risks for environmental smoke exposure in spaces where smoking occurs. These are experts in the field, and they just don't see ventilation as a viable option. This directly impacts my teenage daughter, who works next door to one of the new marijuana selling businesses in an adjoining building, and I'm extremely concerned that she will be exposed to secondhand smoke if indoor consumption is allowed in existing retail stores. Being someone who has experience working with intoxicated individuals, I can safely say that retail employees do not have the training, the experience, or the knowledge to handle this situation. These are separate business models with separate requirements, and should be kept that way. Adding the option to allow intoxication on premises without the proper training and relations is just asking for a costly lawsuit directed at our businesses and city when the next marijuana high tourist is killed when he or she steps into traffic. Besides the safety risks, there are also profound health risks to employees of a business that would allow indoor smoking. Constant exposure to secondhand smoke is not only unhealthy, but it leads to major health problems like cancer. Just because an employee smokes themselves and understands the risk does not make it okay. We protect our employees in this community, and we do not allow them to be injured on the job. I'm asking the City Council act in a responsible and educated manner regarding the proposed memorandum. If we choose to endorse this, it needs to clearly ask for the proper regulations to be developed to protect customers and employees. It needs to ask for the business models to be separated to prevent the issues I've discussed. It needs to clearly state that indoor secondhand smoke is non-negotiable and unacceptable. I ask this as a concerned citizen. I ask this as a professional whose job it is to protect our city from the damaging effects of secondhand smoke. I ask this as a former bartender who knows difficulties in dealing with intoxicated individuals, and I ask this as a father whose daughter will be affected by your decision. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Zach Balls.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council.
Welcome back.
Hey, I wanted to talk to you guys about maybe possibly moving forward with getting the Uber and Lyft ban on the ballot in October. A few weeks ago, you guys had talked about doing something as to whether to take a direction to either not put it on or put it on the ballot, and I'd like you guys to bring that discussion back up and make a decision moving forward to put that on the ballot, giving the people the choice to choose whether or not we should have these services here or not. The reason I would like this done is because I find a few things interesting with it and the issues we've already talked about, so I won't waste too much of your time. But the big one is, is it gives us the right to charge sales tax and find out if these people aren't going to pay sales tax, and if not, then I don't think they should be allowed to operate here. As any business owner in this community would be offended if they'd have to pay their sales tax, why do these guys get to come in and run for free, not give anything back to the community? So, we'd like to get this moved forward so that we can allow the people to make a decision and get it on the ballot and go from there. Any questions?
Yeah, Zach, on the sales tax, now through the state law, they're not required to pay sales tax, or do we have to enforce that? Because I read in Juno they have to register so they pay sales tax.
Well, what they have to do, yeah, is they have to act like any other normal business. They've got to get a business license, which they're supposed to do anyways under their independent contractor status, and then as a city or a community, if that community charges sales tax, then we have the right to collect it. Now, in this instance of the cab business, the way it was set up so you didn't have to chase individual drivers is that the company pays the sales tax. Now, Uber has been in a big fight with Juno because Juno wants to have Uber pay the sales tax, since all the money goes through Uber first anyways, so they don't have to chase individuals. Uber's decided they're not going to do that, and so they're in a big war on that. But as communities, and even as you guys, we've said, you know, we want inspections, we want, you know, regulations, we want sales tax, we want to know who's driving these cars, and if they don't want to come in and play by our rules, that's fine. The state bill gives us the option to put it up for a vote and opt out if we can get the public to ban it.
Thank you very much. Do we know if anybody's doing it here yet, or?
There's a few, yeah. It hasn't taken off, you know, as big as they would like to claim it has at the moment, but, you know, if you're going to be here and you're going to be doing business, you need to pay your share.
Need to pay your sales tax. I always stand for that. Thank you very much, Zach.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Thanks.
Excellent. All right, that brings us to Renee.
Good evening. I'm Renee Schofield. I live on Pennick Island. I apologize for my voice, and I'll do the best I can, and hopefully it'll hold out throughout what I have to say. I'll make it brief. I sent you a couple of letters this week, and I think you've probably all received those. So, I'm not going to read them out loud. Certainly will make them available to anybody that wants to see them. A couple of things to highlight in those letters is that I really want you to table this resolution that's supporting onsite consumption. I think that until you see the regulations come from the state and kind of see where their heads are and what they're thinking about, we can't really support something we don't know what it looks like yet, so I think we need to slow down. Plenty of time. Once they get them written, you will have 60 days for public comment. At that point in time, you could bring this back and look at it, then I think that just makes better sense. As a business owner in the drug and alcohol testing industry, I'll tell you that today I had nine people in follow-up programs who have failed their drug screens and have lost their jobs and are working hard to get them back. It's the highest number we've seen. Nine people that are without families, who are high-wage earners that are not having their revenue. So, I want you to think long and hard about that, because the thing that Reed speaks about is the secondhand smoke and some of the things that come along with that. Those things are going to continue to happen, and we're going to see more of it. Is it just because of onsite consumption? No, it will happen in other arenas. So, there's that piece of it. I also want to reference that it took us five decades, 50 years, to recognize that secondhand smoke hurts us. We need to think long and hard about if we want to turn back the clock and set ourselves up to do more of that damage. Let's be real about it. The voters voted for private use. We decriminalize recreational use of marijuana for private use. We have to wonder and we have to question, would those voters have voted the same if we had said, "We think we're just going to go all out and have onsite consumption in pot cafes and become the pot capital of Alaska"? Would they have voted the same? I don't know. But they did vote for public consumption. It wasn't in our language, it wasn't in our wording, and so if you want to go that direction, let's get it back on the ballot and vote for it, and let's ask our voters what they think about it. I don't think it's right for us to go against, because that's what I hear all the time. The voters said, "The voters said private use." Let's be clear about that. As a mom of a recovering addict, I'll tell you that we got trouble with treatment, detox, and all those situations in this community. We know that. We hear it every day. You see it on the street every day. So, if we're going to have it, and we're going to have the tax dollars, and we're going to have that revenue, then we need to make sure where is that money going? And is it going to prevention and treatment? Is that money going to be dumped back into GF, or is it going to be on the streets? Let's put it towards the very thing that it harms, and that's the people. So, let's take that tax money, which we don't know what it is yet. I asked that question of the Borough Finance Director yesterday. I was told, "I can't tell you that." Can't tell me that, because we're only collecting from one person at this time. Once we have two or more turning in their tax receipts, then they can give a number. They do that to protect the business, I get that. So, we won't even know what that number looks like until October, but I would urge you to get with the Borough and decide where those monies going. That tax money needs to be directed back to the very citizens that will suffer from addiction tendencies and will need that money for treatment, detox, and recovery. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Maybe.
Thank you, Renee. Nice to hear your questions. Mark.
Your Honor, Council members. Mark Woodward, 1027 Millar Street. I'm here representing the Stony Moose, and a couple of things to talk about. Onsite's been something that's been in the works from the beginning, and I know that because I've been researching this business from the very beginning, and the smoking lounge was something that I always wanted because I think we can do it the right way. And I think that currently the policy that Alaska's having is akin to "Don't ask, don't tell." You know, "I'm not going to ask what you're doing as long as you don't tell me what you're doing." And that's why I think this is a pressing issue right now. I think that's why the city needs to comment on it right now, because the comment period is going to be a long time. We might, if the city even goes to this route, we might be talking about December to January timeframe of it actually coming back and AMCO having a vote for or against this. And so, I think right now it is pertinent for the city to make a comment, and I think that's why you saw the Anchorage Assembly finally say, "Hey, you know, let's address this issue. Let's talk about this issue. Let's get it out there," especially because, you know, the October election's coming or the fall election's coming. You know, the voters should know where council members stand, where the city stands, and I think this is a fantastic way is discussing this resolution. So, again, onsite's something that's always been there, and so that's why, you know, it's been important to me, because we need to have a place, and I see that every single day, not only for the tourists, but also locals. You know, we've had as many locals want that as, and they've expressed that to us as the tourists have. And secondly, you hear a lot about this secondhand smoke, okay? And you have to remember that these studies that a lot of people are talking about deal with tobacco, okay? Tobacco and cannabis are two different things, and so you've got to remember that when they talk about these studies. Are these studies talking about tobacco? Because you know what? In our plans, our onsite plans, we specifically state, "Zero tobacco products will be allowed in our lounge." You know, people who consume cannabis sometimes like to put them in blunts or large cigar-type situations, or you have called European blends, which is kind of half tobacco, half cannabis. None of that will be allowed in our store at all, or the lounge, okay? And then I've heard a lot about the election of 2014. You know, that's when Proposition 2 was out there, and so I think it behooves this council to see, well, how did the city vote? And again, I looked up the numbers again. It was 56 to 44, and yes, you know, and those are your constituents who voted for you. And so, that's a large number. You know, I'm a political scientist. I was in college, and that's a large win, and so obviously people are comfortable with it, you know, and so therefore I think they'd be the same thing with this onsite consumption. They'd be comfortable with it as well. A couple of things about the studies, you know, people didn't talk about a lot of studies. I looked up the Washington Post. They did a comprehensive study of Colorado and Washington, and they talked about four specific quick questions. Teen use, what about it, okay? And the studies say that it's unchanged, and I want to talk about that even locally. If you look at the YRBS survey, it's a survey that the state puts out every two years, okay? And in 2013, 20% of all high school Alaskan kids said that they had tried cannabis within the past 30 days. We go to 2015, that number dropped to 19. So, after it was legalized, that number dropped. So, again, what's the significance of that number? And to me, if you look deeper at those numbers, 48% of kids in alternative schools that year had used marijuana within the past 30 days, and so to me, is it a problem of onsite consumption, or is it a problem of us, to me, not providing internships and externships to those students who they can learn the skills and values of a job and drug test those kids so that they understand the value of that as a minor, okay? Look at the problems that way, not just, you know, the effects of what onsite could do. Another one, we've talked about tax revenues, you know. I don't want to tell you the number that we've paid so far, but it matches basically what you guys thought you would make in a year, okay? And that's just my store. We've since surpassed that number, and the tax revenues are going to be very strong, and so I guess one thing that the council members have to think about is, you know, when does that number become significant? Because I think if you have onsite consumption, with our plan, the city will make more revenue. And I'm telling you, I think you guys can make a quarter of a million dollars in this industry in a year. That's a significant number. And then the last thing that I think is very important, real quick, is the studies show that marijuana poisonings increase with small children as well as adult ER visits, okay, both in Colorado and Washington. So, let's again, look at these numbers a little bit deeper, okay? The biggest one to me is the adult ER visits, okay? And why did that happen a lot in Colorado? And to me, the number one reason why is in Colorado, you can buy edibles that have up to, I know, I've seen candy bars with 100 milligrams, okay, in one thing, and you can go into the store and buy that one candy bar, okay? Without anybody around you, you have no idea. Let's say you're from out of town, you come in there and you eat that whole thing, you're going to the ER, without a doubt, okay? But if you look at our plan and Alaska's plan, and sure, the policies haven't been made yet, but they're right there, they've talked about them a bunch of times, we're talking either a 5-milligram or a 10-milligram maximum purchase for onsite, 5 or 10 milligrams, okay? That is significantly less than what they allow in Colorado and Washington, okay? And not only that, you have trained staff there to help people make those decisions, because we do. We get that question a lot. "Hey, I haven't had this product in 20 years. How much should I take?" We get that question asked all the time, and we have trained staff. We talk about this all the time, about what information you can provide, and it's been great, okay? So, our trained staff can make a difference, okay? And the smaller amounts that we have planned, that the state has planned, will make a difference, okay? And again, another thing, and I saw this on the way here, Hopkins Alley, I've been down there a couple of times, and people consume there. And I was walking by there just the other day with my son, and right behind, if you know where White Marine Repair is, it's kind of back over there, there's a little hidden spot there, and people consume there. If you look there, there's trash there, you know, from the stores. And again, if you have onsite, you can control that. You can control where they go. You can control the trash, because again, looking back to that stat where I said marijuana poisonings increase with small children, if you consume everything at our store, okay, and then have a responsible way home, just like you do with the bars, taxis, have a designated driver take you, or possibly Uber, again, we have a way to control these things a little bit better than just saying, "Here, here's your product. Now, it's up to you to find a place to consume it." And that's currently the situation. So, again, that's why the Stony Moose supports the onsite consumption, because it solves a lot of our problems, and it kind of gets rid of this "don't ask, don't tell" policy that we're following. So, any questions? Yes?
Do Colorado and Washington have onsite consumption?
They don't. I know Colorado approached it, and I think their board, because they have clubs there, they have private clubs in Colorado. We don't, AMCO doesn't allow private clubs here. They shut them down in Anchorage. And so, they have a place to go right now with these clubs, but they turned it down because, again, they were scared about the federal government, and you could look at the Denver Post, that's the same thing that happened to our AMCO board. But what happens, it's going to happen in Colorado, it's the same thing that happened in Alaska, that wasn't a good enough answer for the public, and so that's why AMCO's revisiting this, because they've, I guess, had a change of heart with their first vote, so. And I don't know about Washington or Oregon yet.
Judy has a question.
Yeah.
So, just explain to me how this is going to work. You're going to have a cover charge, right?
Yes, and there's a reason for that. You're just monitoring.
Well, I would assume that there would be.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm saying, so, I mean, I get that it's going to benefit your business, but the reality is, if people want to smoke, the people who are going to smoke outside are going to be just the same as the people who drink. I mean, that's not really going to, it's going to benefit you, and I get that. What is the amount of time that people will be allowed to stay in your business and consume? Like you're saying, they can only buy a very small amount, right?
Yeah.
Can they do that multiple times?
Yeah, that's per transaction.
Right. So, and then how long do they stay in there? I remember you talking one time about a button.
Yeah. So, how this is going to work, we've actually advanced from the button. Now, we're going to use this table tracking software that they use in high-end restaurants, and so I'll have a hostess station, just like a restaurant. You come in, we have all of our tables identified in that software, and so let's say you and a friend come into our store and you want to go upstairs. So, when I have a table for two come up, I click on that, you go to the counter, purchase your product, okay, and then you go upstairs to your table, and you have a half hour. That's how much, we've talked to a lot of people about this, and they've even, I went to Amsterdam, that's how much I've researched this thing, because that's how serious I am, and people laugh, but I'm taking this seriously. If you've been to the store, you'll see that. And so, they said about a half hour is about how much people spend in a store.
For one.
Smoking a joint is basically what they're saying, or a marijuana cigarette, okay? And so, you spend that half hour, our table tracking software will say, "Hey, you know, your time's up if you have left anyway." And we'll say, "Hey, if you'd like to stay again, you can re-up," okay, without a problem. The third timer, essentially the second time you want to re-up, requires a manager's approval, okay? And so, that's how, not only do we have one person monitoring consumption, we can have a secondary person come in and say, "Okay, hey, looks like Table 22 has consumed this. They've been here this long. Let me make a judgment call on what they're doing right now." And so, that gives us more control and management over consumption itself.
So, see, I guess for me, those kinds of rules haven't been defined yet, and so, because, you know, just like we have people who over-serve and how are we going to control that in this?
There won't be rules for that.
There won't be?
No, we're making them ourselves.
There won't be.
I doubt it, because that's something you can't enforce. Like, how long can a person stay in a bar? You can't.
I don't mean staying, I mean, how many times, like how much product before you say, "We can't serve you anymore"?
I don't know if they'll have a number, and so that's why we're going this route.
I guess send.
This gives us a way to control that, because we're, as a manager, I could say, "Hey, you know, you guys have been sitting here for an hour and a half, or an hour, now you want another half hour, and you've consumed all this? I think you guys are fine. You guys can go on your way." And that's why we want the table tracking software, because if you don't have that, then I have no idea how long you've been here, and I don't like that. I want more control than that. Yes?
What is your plan? So, let's say somebody goes the hour, and you've decided that they've consumed enough, and they're to go on their way, as you say, then what then? Do you make sure that they have a designated driver or a cab, or do they just walk out the door?
Yeah, you guys okay? Do you have plans? Yeah, absolutely. Just like, we're treating this, most of my staff are ex-bartenders. I'm an ex-bartender, so that's where this is coming from, and absolutely, just like that, because we have a liability within that. You know, we don't want people who are impaired driving home. I can't steal their keys, you know, but I can do as much as I can.
So, you could inquire, but really beyond that?
Absolutely, without a doubt.
Just as with alcohol, they could walk out the door, get in their car, and off they go.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mark? Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Terrence.
Good evening. I'm Terrence Robbins, Southeast Prevention Services, 3710 Hillside Road. I'd like to first comment on a couple of things that Mark talked about. I've included under table here a packet that includes all the comments that were submitted to the Marijuana Control Board in two of the three times that this onsite consumption thing has been brought up. The Marijuana Control Board has failed to pass anything each time. This will be the fourth attempt, the fourth time there'll be public testimony offered for 60 days on onsite consumption. When there is onsite consumption testimony, from two of them, because they didn't have the third one, I couldn't find it online, these are the 100 comments they received written. 70 of them, or the 90 that they received, 70 of them are against it. And those 70, most of them cite studies that, without a doubt, show the secondhand smoke from marijuana is cancerous and harmful to your health and harmful to your cardiovascular I was just at a training in Anchorage, the Tobacco Control Organization, and we listened to experts from UC San Francisco. We know, I mean, they went through the science of why secondhand marijuana smoke is harmful to people around you. So, in here, which I'm going to leave with you guys, are the citations to the studies that prove this. So, you know, Mr. Woodward did not provide you with any citations. He just said that, you know, the studies are BS. YRBS, YRBS Catch-A-Can is different than YRBS in Alaska. Our rates are, I believe, 29% or 27% youth marijuana smoking. It's already a big problem, and there has been changes and stuff. I wasn't prepared to go over the YRBS stuff, because it might not matter with onsite consumption. Colorado youth use has increased at the same time the United States marijuana use rate has decreased. That's very significant. So, now I'll get on to this other stuff. Basically, I'm just speaking to you today to protest Resolution 172760 for the following reasons. I printed this out and given it to you so you can look over what I was going to, what I talked about, so I'll just kind of skim it. You'd be endorsing a regulation that isn't developed or finalized without knowledge of the specific language in the final regulation. You can read it after it passes, like the Affordable Care Act, if you want. And remember that one time the Borough told you that there wouldn't be zones in downtown where marijuana could be sold, so you didn't have to pass a prohibition on retail stores? Remember that? I've heard members of this body and marijuana supporters at this podiums emphatically say that public voted for marijuana sales, so we need to follow that mandate. Well, guess what? The initiative that we voted for specifically prohibited onsite consumption. There was even a $100 fine for public consumption, which by definition included marijuana retail stores, because under state statute, that's a public place. The five-person Marijuana Control Board now has three marijuana industry representatives who are doing everything they can to subvert the will of the voters who voted against onsite consumption. Believe me, these three people have one goal: permit the sale of as much marijuana in Alaska as possible. They do not care about anybody in this room except for those representing the marijuana business. The Marijuana Control Board has attempted to permit and regulate onsite consumption and failed three times, disregarded overwhelming public opposition during each comment period, and then used procedural games to start over. I printed and published these, as I told you. Inside, like I said, there are citations to everything I talked about. And these people are doctors and... And these, and these people are doctors and public health officials, and people who really, truly understand the harmful effects of marijuana. And their voices deserve as much weight as the unsighted assertions of the marijuana industry. Then you can ask yourself, why, as a body which funds police and emergency services, nonprofits who are trying to reduce marijuana use and protect the public health, provide, you guys provide the infrastructure for the operation of Peace Health and Gateway and Akila and a visitors' bureau? Why would you want marijuana bars downtown? If you surveyed every employee in Coalition or Task Force member of each of these groups and agencies that you fund, what do you think they would tell you about the public benefit of a bar where people can get high on concentrates and joints that have as much THC as 18 joints did at Woodstock? 0.5% THC was the level of marijuana joints that were tested at Woodstock. And I listened to this researcher telling me this personally, and then he said, he went to the second Woodstock, and they were 18 times stronger, the same as smoking 18 joints at once. What would the, and then, and then hit the streets of Ketchikan and drive on our roads past our children. In this thing, I cite studies where they talk, that talks about how prevalent driving after smoking marijuana is by people that are regular smokers. Eighty-five people died in 2014 in the state of Washington, killed by, where the drivers were, were stoned, were high on marijuana. That was double the year before of 40 people who died in the state of Washington. And that was when marijuana, recreational marijuana really took off. So if you make it more available, if you give people a place to smoke downtown, they're going to drive. And I won't go into every word on this thing, but I do talk about how it increases the risk of becoming involved in a car accident at any level, so every, by 25 to 50%. Eighty-seven percent of them reported an over 50% probability of future driving under the influence of marijuana, even after having been shown the data on the increased crash rates. Thirty-eight percent of current California marijuana users ages 18 to 64 old reported driving a vehicle within three hours of using marijuana. And then I talked about the surge in Washington. So the economic impact of allowing onsite consumption is going to benefit who? It's gonna benefit these guys. It's gonna benefit Rainforest Cafe economically. It'll increase some of your tax revenue, if that's how you want to get it. But that's it, very few beneficiary areas. Eighty percent of people, according to the Behavioral Risk Factor survey that the state does every three years, 80% of the people in Ketchikan do not smoke marijuana. Okay? Eighty-eight percent of them haven't smoked in the last month. So, 10,000 adults in Ketchikan, do we want to protect the 7,800 people? Is that right? No, the 8,200 people, or 8,800 people, or the 1,200 people? It's a choice you guys can make. Any questions? Sorry about being so...
Thanks, Terrence. Go ahead, Julie.
Just one, I'm wondering about this survey. I've never been surveyed.
The Burfuss?
The survey of how many people in Ketchikan smoke marijuana.
So the WRBS tests is done at the high school.
So it's not the whole of Ketchikan?
No, but the Burfuss is done nationwide, and they, and they, they're statisticians, and they know how to survey and account for cell phones and stuff like that. And they survey across Alaska, and they come up with a representative sample, and they say that in Alas- I should, you're right, I apologize, it wasn't Ketchikan numbers, it was Alaska numbers. In Alaska, 20% of adults had used marijuana in the past year, and, or, in the, yeah, in the past year, and 12% had used in the past month. So, sorry. Thank you for the question.
No, yeah, and I understand that survey, I know what you're talking about. They survey a certain population, and they take a percentage of that, and they say that's for all of Alaska. Yeah.
There's a lot of sites. I've met those guys in Anchorage, and they're, they're very nerdy.
Thanks, Terrence.
You're welcome.
Anybody else here that speaks in the council that didn't sign up tonight? Going once? Come on, Mr. Wheeler.
Go ahead.
After him.
Hey, guys. Eric Reamer, 420 Front Street, Coleman with Stony Moose. I have not prepared any comments for tonight. It's been a long day for me. I have another job, I've chartered for 12 hours today. A little bit out of it, but a little bit hot under the collar, too. I can't sit here and listen to people demonize cannabis. I mean, it's just, you want to know who comes into our shop? You want to know who comes into Stony Moose? I get grandmas in there. I got, I get people coming off of their opiate medication that specifically say, yes, I use this and I'm getting off the drugs that help me go to sleep. I get a woman that doesn't want to get high at all. She comes in and buys flour, takes it home, and cooks it until she gets the cannabinoids, the CBDs out of it that she wants to help her sleep. She cooks it so that she doesn't feel the psychoactive effects, and then she eats it and it helps her rest. I get people that haven't, tourists that come in there, that haven't smoked in years. I get people that are everyday smokers. I get a complete cross-section of the population of the United States coming in there. And I'm, I'm listening to Terrence, and all due respect for Terrence, I, we are, we know each other socially, so. But when he says 88% of, 80% of the people in Alaska or in Ketchikan don't smoke, yet 56% of the voters voted to legalize, I mean, what's that tell you? Even if you don't use, you recognize that cannabis use is not the gateway drug, the harmful demonic thing that it's been pumped up to be for the last 50 years. I mean, we know that it's got medical effects, beneficial medical effects. We know that people use it for everything from anxiety to treating nausea, for helping with cancer, most treatments, things like that. I mean, I'm not gonna get into it. I don't have studies to cite for you, but I guarantee you, they are out there. Israel, for instance, has completely decriminalized cannabis, and is leading the world as far as research into the medical benefits of cannabinoids. Not going there. I am, I do want to speak for just a moment about the second-hand smoke. If you are coming in to our shop, then you don't have a problem with cannabis use, number one. Number two, if you're coming into our lounge to sit down and eat an edible, or enjoy a joint, a cannabis cigarette, whatever, then you're not worried about second-hand smoke. Number three, as far as smoke, you know, leaving the building, we have contracted with mechanical contractors to design ventilation systems to clean that air that is going out, it's being scrubbed with carbon, it's being filtered several times before it even goes out, and it's going up and away. I mean, it's going out the top of our building. Our building, I'm speaking specifically towards our lounge and the plans that we've made for our lounge. So, as far as second-hand smoke, it doesn't exist unless you're putting yourself in that situation. In a building next door, our walls are fire tapes. This is, this is, all commercial construction is made, and I've learned this through building out the shop, I've learned a lot about commercial construction. It's all made to prevent fire, to prevent smoke, to prevent airflow, all this stuff. I mean, it's just not going to happen that the people in Carl Ritchie's Jazz Cabaret, which is next door to our shop, are going to be smelling cannabis. It's just, it's not, it's not the case. Gosh, there's so much more I want to say. Well, like I said, I'm kind of frazzled from the day, but I just couldn't sit by and listen to people demonize this thing that the voters of this state and many other states across the nation have deemed acceptable, and people want it. As far as the tax revenue, that's what it was. Where's the money going? I would encourage you guys, we have paid a lot of taxes so far, let me tell you. And it's gonna keep on growing in the years. I think within, like, like Mark said, by the end of the year, you guys are probably gonna collect over a quarter of a million dollars in taxes. And maybe you should think about where that money is going to go. I mean, I would personally put it towards education. I think I was up here a few months ago, and I said just that. But, I mean, it's your money, you do with it what you want to do. But I'm just saying that it's bringing, we're a huge economic benefit to this city in a time where a lot of other things aren't bringing in the money that they used to bring, oil, for instance, timber, for instance. I mean, I've been a commercial fisherman for years, and even that number, even the oceans are not as much as they used to be. So, I'm just saying, the tourism is our bread and butter, and that tourists that come in to Ketchikan, that come into our shop are really thrilled that it's there, and we owe it to these guys to give them a place to consume legally. They come in, they ask, well, what can I do here? Where can I go to smoke this? What can I do with this? I'm like, hey, you guys need to be very respectful of the community. You shouldn't smoke in public, it's illegal, it's punishable, up to a $100 fine if you do get caught. And everybody's like, look, we're not gonna do that, we're not trying to walk into Thomas Trading Company and blow a big cloud of smoke out. And that's a really extreme example, but everybody that comes in there is just thrilled to be there, and also very respectful of our community. That's all I have to say, I guess. I could cut myself off right there, but I would be happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Any questions for Eric? Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you. Dave Wheeler, Whipplespur. I'm glad to know that Carl's cabaret isn't gonna be waffed with marijuana smoke. I had a bypass a few months back, and I was in a lot of pain, and the Tylenol they were giving me and the morphine they were giving me wasn't keeping me from coughing. What did though was some ginger snaps that came from my local marijuana shop. And that's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Let it be known that Dave's been coming and talking to the council since the day I got on the council. I always appreciate you. All right. Anybody else want to stress the council before we move on? See you then, let's move on. I skipped over communications. We do have a addition to add, I'd like to add to Consent Agenda, item nine, Salvation Army easement. We need to let the state have a little, I guess it goes on to our easement, too, down there, so they can do that paving project and everything. Nobody has a problem, we'll add that to nine. Also, for the consent agenda, I'd like to add, under unfinished business, that number one on the repealing ordinance for the Redmond, you know, where the, on the Redmond project needs a little more of our property. If nobody has any objections, does anybody have a motion to...
Are we a consent agenda?
What?
Are we a consent agenda?
Yeah. Do you have a motion to consent?
Your Honor, I move to consent.
Second.
Move and second it. Okay, so I added those two items, and does anybody have any questions, any of them? I already answered my questions. All right, Colorado.
Do you want me to read them?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I am really out of...
Approval of minutes, regular city council meeting of July 6, 2017, budget transfers, preparation of Ketchikan Public Library strategic plan, declaration of surplus vehicles. Resolution number 172669, authorizing an application for municipal harbor facility grant program funding for the replacement of Bar Harbor North Ramp 3. Assignment of Tideland's lease, ADL 73235, to Richard and Hillary Robbins. Security assignment of Tideland's lease, ADL 73235, to First Bank. An amendment and extension of the same Tideland's lease with Richard and Hillary Robbins. Installation of minimum required safety signage in accordance with the 2017 National Electrical Code at municipally-owned harbor, port and harbor facilities. Resolution number 172671, establishing fees and charges for copying services of the city. Retail marijuana store license renewal of Rainforest Cannabis. Ordinance number 171854, repealing ordinance number 17243, authorizing negotiation of an agreement with the improved order of Redmond for city parking lot improvements and change of rural property, that's in secondary. And that's it, I guess.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Colorado.
Isim?
Yes.
Kus?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Zini?
Yes.
Okay, that passes, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, four, okay. Four zip. That brings us down to seven, new business, General Government A1, Resolution 1726, requesting the state of Alaska Marijuana Control Board, top regulations allowing onsite consumption of marijuana, or approving designated areas for onsite consumption and licensed retail marijuana establishments. Councilmember, Isim?
Yes, Your Honor, I would actually like to, I don't know if I need to move, but I'd like to move that we table this, seeing that there's three missing members, and I know we talked about it beforehand, but I didn't...
Do you want to defer this to the next meeting, or do you want to tailbully it for some other time?
Oh, to the next meeting.
Okay, so we're gonna defer until the next meeting's set table.
But can we discuss also? Can I just say?
Well, then don't make the motion to defer until you say what you want to say.
Okay, I will not.
Because as soon as you defer, we gotta vote.
Right. No, you'd let me talk.
I have a motion.
I want to clarify something. I think there's a, I know there's a misunderstanding, because a couple of you put it in writing. We're not endorsing a regulation tonight, that's not what this resolution is. It's simply urging the Marijuana Board to go forward with forming regulations on onsite consumption. So it's not endorsing a regulation as is stated in one of the letters we got. And we're, it's also not approving onsite consumption, as one person from the public said. So I just wanted to clarify that, that's not what this resolution is. And, yeah, I can say anything else, and, well, no, I didn't want to say it, a couple other things. Just that there's so, there's so many forms of communication nowadays. Not everyone likes to just put it out there on Facebook. But I knew that would be a way to catch a lot of the public. I don't do a lot of things on social media, but I did post it on Facebook, just putting it out there that we're having the meeting tonight, and this is one thing we're talking about. Please get ahold of me if you'd like to have a discussion. So people proceeded to have a discussion on my Facebook page, and it ended up being 176 comments. However, besides those comments, I received 34 emails, 13 face-to-face meetings, and a dozen or so phone calls from people. And of those 230-some-odd forms of communication and comments, and some of them in person, some of them one-on-one, less than 2% were definitely against pushing this resolution forward. And when I say that, I mean, because some of them, some of the comments were just, no, 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 I hate marijuana, get it out of here. And then other comments were, you guys made a mistake by even doing this, knock it off, just stop it now. But those were, you know, less than 2%. And then it came down to a couple of letters that gave reasons why we shouldn't push this resolution forward. So my decision, I don't smoke it, I don't use it, but my decision was based on what I'm hearing from my constituents. And I never thought I'd say that, because I don't like that phrase, my constituents, but the people that I represent, that's where my decision was coming from. So I'll probably say it all again next meeting.
Sounds good. You want to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we tape, that we...
Defer.
Defer this to the next meeting.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Colorado.
Um, let's see, Zini?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kus?
To defer.
Why? Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
Isim?
Yes.
Okay, that's deferred to our next meeting, Dave. Okay, so that brings us to, whoever my agenda is. That brings us to 782, location, Front Street and Dock Street, Borough Transit Bus Shuttle. I think the management wants some input from us. Do we have a motion? Which I'll give.
Oh, I got it all.
782.
782. Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the City Council direct staff to take such action regarding the location of the Front Street and Dock Street Borough Transit Bus/Shuttle Stop as determined appropriate by the City Council.
Second.
Carl, can you explain what's going on?
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna defer to the assistant manager and have him come up and outline
Good evening.
Good evening. Back in two thousand and twelve, the former Public Works Director, Cliff Allen, brought a motion to the council to move the Borough Transit Bus Stop from where it was on the corner of Grant and Front Street to this end down here, citing slight distances and several other safety concerns. Off and on since that time, we have an adjacent property owner to where the current bus stop is right now, who has made numerous complaints. They're unable to rent their building, sell their building, lease their building, whatever it may be. Additionally, when the buses is sometimes, especially in the darker months, the winter months, when the bus is pulled in, given the alcove at that particular building, there are some pretty undesirable things that happen in that alcove. And when the bus is in there from time to time, then it's, the police department can't see what's going on. So, the property owner has requested that the bus stop be moved. So, between Public Works and I, we've gone through and as indicated, we've looked at several other options of where it can go. Honestly, none of those are desirable. They either create more problems of their own, they take away additional parking from what we have now, or they are really inconvenient to, of the bus riders. And given that the decision to move the bus stop originally was a council decision, we felt inappropriate to bring it back to council and see if it's something you're interested in moving or if it should stay where it's at.
Who wants to start? Dick?
Yeah, I personally feel, I have to watch that down here, that we need to leave it where it is. We've made a good decision earlier. I recognize that alcove is a problem. There's a pretty simple cure, you put a gate across it and you're open.
The one thing that I would bring up and add to this is that this fall, when DOT expand or widens the sidewalks out there, that's going to have the effect of moving that bus, that three or four feet out, that much further from the building, which is going to increase visibility somewhat back into that area. It's up to the property owner if they want to put the gate across the alcove. We've asked them to put up trespassing signs in there so that KPD would have an easier time removing people. So far, they have not shown the willingness to do that.
One more question, Dave. And when DOT widens that sidewalk, is there a cut-in right now for that bus so it's not in the traffic?
Right now, there's not a cut-in for it. It just pulls in. It's got the advantage right now, there's a fire hydrant that's right there, so there's already a yellow strip there for no parking, so they're able to pull in and pull it. When they put the bullbouts in, it's going to give the effect of a cutout for it.
So, yeah, it's not going to be out in the traffic lane whether they pull into it?
No.
Okay.
Anybody else? I agree with Dave, I agree, I mean, it's the simplest thing, if he wants to protect his property, I can't see us moving. I mean, it was a big move from over there to down there, I just can't see it, another example. Anybody else? I think we got direction. Thank you very much. All right, that brings us down to vouchers. Daily News, four thousand two hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-three cents. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I move the approval of vouchers to Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of four thousand two hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-three cents.
Second. Moving second. Call the roll.
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zini?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Now I can write my check to Mark.
About time.
Yeah. I like having you on the council. That brings us down to managers' board. Carl?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody have any questions here, Carl?
I only have one question. I don't know, it's under the attorney's thing. He's talking about what he's been doing. He said, review, film me an agreement with museum. What are we filming?
I'm going to have to defer to the attorney, Mr. Mayor. And just out of my own curiosity, nothing there.
Apparently, it's like Fight Club, Your Honor, and the agreement that I read said we weren't supposed to disclose what it is, which my comment was, really, that could be tough to do around here, but it's a national cable type of show.
A national cable type of show wants to come and film at our museum?
Yeah.
But not disclose what they're selling?
What the thing is, until it's shown.
On TV?
Yeah, and I don't know that it got signed or something. Right.
Okay, I guess we should inquire with our museum department.
Good enough.
Thank you. I may be curious. I just wonder if they wanted the mayor in.
I had some pause at that provision, so I'm not going to be the one to spill the beans if I can help.
All right, thank you very much, Mitch. Anybody else have anything for the manager? Here and done, that was the city clerk's file.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mitch, you have anything else?
I don't have anything.
Future agenda items. Carl, Zach brought up that, I mean, that ballot thing, but I don't know, I guess my big thing is sales tax. I guess I'll, before I push anything on, I'll come talk to you about sales tax on Uber and Lyft. Because I think if anybody's doing business, they need to pay the sales tax here and how we're going to do it, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, my understanding of the legislation that is passed, if the attorney wants to weigh in, he's free to do so, that the drivers who are doing the transaction are the ones who will be collecting the sales tax locally. I don't know if the attorney has a different understanding, but that was the last update I got from Juneau.
Of course.
No, that's my understanding as well, Your Honor. The only thing I should probably mention is the clerk and I have worked through it and if there was to be something on for this next regular election, we'd be cutting it pretty close, bringing it back to you at the first meeting in August, but we don't have any direction at this point.
Understood. So, they have to sign up with, I'm talking about the Lyft drivers, they have to sign up with the Borough then as independent contract?
That's my understanding.
And so, the Borough would be enforcing that.
Correct.
Thank you.
So, how are we going to know they're signing up? Are we just going to ignore it? The Borough says you got some taxes or somebody's going to check them out?
Well, the Borough should be doing that, would be doing that. I guess we could ask the Borough if they...
Still our taxes.
Yeah.
And if the state offers no local control, what can we do about it anyway? Whether they sign up or not? What voice do we have?
I don't know, we'll have to talk to our Borough guys. They would enforce taxes. Mayor and council comments, Dave. Okay, Mayor and council comments, Dick.
None. You asked the one about Ubers, I was going to ask about some. I have none, thank you.
I'll get some more info and see which, and then I'll come back to you guys on that. If you guys want, I'll give you some option on if you want to do any ballot thing and try to get more information on sales tax. Judy?
I have nothing to add.
Julie?
I'm just glad to see both sides tonight on the issue that we spent the most time talking about, or according to public comments and stuff. I was happy to see that.
Thank you. Mark?
I've had a couple of conversations on various topics over the last few days with a couple of folks. And I've received some calls on various topics, and I've always offered this up to people that, thanks for contacting me, will we see you at the podium this week? And oftentimes, the answer is, is no.
Ninety-nine point five percent.
For a couple of different reasons. One that came to light today was the fear of public speaking and the fact that we can be a pretty intimidating crowd, Judy. The other reason that folks, while they're willing to contact us individually, may have reservations about speaking their minds in a public venue. And I just thought I would voice a comment that it's great to contact us as council people, but I think people's comments and opinions carry a lot more weight and resonance when they do it first person at the podium instead of me sitting here saying, a lot of people have chimed in on this and they say. I think folks shouldn't have reservations about whatever their opinion is on a particular topic. It's a small town, we're all not going to agree on a lot of different things, but it's good to get your voice out there. When it comes to the fear of public speaking, I can certainly appreciate that, but I just think it's important that if folks have something to say, by all means, contact us, but come on down and take a couple of minutes out of your evening and tell us what you think. That's it.
Excellent, Mark. Dave, how was your evening? Bye-bye.
Sorry, I apologize.
No problem.
I still explain.
Thank you. Let's see, I'm talking about Mark and, you know, people coming to talk to the council. One of my philosophies is make it as casual and easy as possible for people to come here. I don't like it to be intimidating. I know how it is when I have to go and talk to the Borough and they have those big things and keep us, I mean, if I ever had to plan a council chamber or whatever, I'd make it as less intimidating as possible, easy access for the public. That's why I like this one and heck, if we just had fold-out tables, I think it'd even be easier for the public. So, I try to make it as easy as possible for anybody who wants to come talk. Encourage them, call them by their first name and I don't make everybody say, "Your Honor." So, just as casual as possible. Mitch, did you, Mitch, you have something?
Yes, Your Honor, I'm not certain I was sufficiently clear earlier, but if the council wants a ballot proposition to prohibit the Uber-type operations, we would need to have an ordinance ready, I believe, and Katie and I tried to work through the algebra this week, on the agenda for the next meeting.
Thank you. I don't know if we're there or not.
Okay, well, we're going to, on likely, all likelihood, be there by default unless there's a special meeting or an extra meeting.
Understood.
Thank you.
All right. Also, I just want to thank everybody for their support and prayers for my fight with the cancer. I go down Monday to find out if I'm winning or not, so make sure on Monday you guys keep me in prayer. And, but if things have been going good, Dr. Isos, my blood work's going in the right direction, so I hope that's positive. And I feel really good and I'm happy to be here, pass with you guys, so. Does anybody have any last things?
I got one more thing.
Yeah.
So, just based on what the attorney just said, so none of us asked for that to be brought up for the next meeting, so it won't be?
All I'm going to do is talk to Carl and see what we'd have to do and I'll probably talk to you guys and see if there's interest to go do that. And if there's not enough people, I'm not going to bring anything up.
Okay.
Carl?
Mr. Mayor, if the council wants to consider a ballot proposition on the October ballot, we need to bring an ordinance forward at the August third meeting. It doesn't mean you have to pass it, but if you want to have the opportunity to discuss submitting a ballot proposition to the voters in October, we need direction tonight to bring that ballot proposition forward. If there's no direction, we won't bring it forward.
And I would like to bring that up as a topic to discuss the next meeting to see if that's something that should be on the ballot.
Can we get four hands to just put it on the agenda?
Do we have four hands?
And then we can fight it.
Each knee, son, chief. We have four. It will be on the next agenda.